Hello, I'm Richard Frieder from the Hartford Votes Hartford Vote Coalition, and we're very pleased to present these brief interviews with candidates for the 2025 Hartford Board of Education, who will be on the ballot for the November 4th election. The Hartford Votes Hartford Vote Coalition is a nonpartisan group of about a dozen organizations and agencies dedicated to supporting the democratic process and increasing voter engagement in Hartford. In the past, we have hosted live, in-person events with candidates. However, this year, we're continuing to conduct interviews via Zoom. Format we have found helps make them more convenient and accessible for a greater number of people. These recordings allow community members to watch or re-watch the interviews at their own time and pace as they prepare to vote. All four candidates running for the Hartford Board of Education this year were invited to participate in these interviews. Two of them responded, and we're very pleased to share their interviews with you. For more information about the coalition and this year's election, including the links to all interviews with the Board of Education candidates, as well as details on how to register, where to vote, and other important resources, please visit our website at www.hartfordvotes.org. We'd also love to hear your feedback on these interviews and our work in general. You can connect with us through our website. Again, that's www.hartfordvotes.org. Thank you.
Hello, good afternoon.
Hello, good afternoon. Thanks for having me today.
Thank you for making space in your busy calendar and also really joining us today, you know, for this candid conversation. So this meeting is being recorded. I just want to make sure that, okay, great. So I will be doing the introductions of the other two guests that are with us today as part of the conversation. But just to start, really, my name is Janit Cibeles. I'm the Chief of Community Impact and Development for the Centro for Latino Progress. And I'm here representing the Hartford Votes Hartford Vote Coalition that has around 28 community-based organizations across Hartford, all really working together to promote civic participation and ensure that our residents have the information they need to make their voice heard. Like I mentioned before, I'm joined today by two of our youth advocates, Ningosi Herbert and also Kaliana Serrano. They have been very active in the community, in their schools, and we are very happy to have them here. So the conversation is really about the opportunity to make some questions that has been sorted by a group of people based on community's feedback. And once again, we truly appreciate your time, but also your commitment to the children's and family of Hartford. So the first question is very specific regarding the new superintendent, who has emphasized financial stability, community engagement, and improving student's outcome as his top priorities. The question is, as a board member, how will you help the district stay accountable for these goals while also supporting the role of the superintendent with the resources and the guidance needed to succeed? And if you have any specific actions, please go ahead and detail those.
Absolutely. Well, thank you so much for having me here to all of you today. I'm a proud graduate of Hartford Neighborhood Schools. I went to Canelli, and then I graduated from Weaver, class of 2008. So, and I've been involved in education, particularly equity and education work for seven-plus years, right? And I recognize the importance of education, both for myself, but also in our larger community, right? What it means and how important it is. School was a really important place for me, and I know that it is for many students as well, for many families, right? As it should be. And so I firmly believe in having a access to free public education that is well-funded, well-resourced, that has all the things that is needed, right? But we also recognize that we live in a system that doesn't always prioritize the education of our young people. We also know we live under a system that particularly doesn't prioritize the needs and the needs of our people of color and working-class communities like Hartford. So for us as a Board of Education, it was really important that we brought on, one of the biggest decisions we're ever going to make was hiring a new superintendent, because a superintendent has so much power to oversee what the administration is going to do. And Boards of Education have a lot of power about what happens to our young people within our young people, within our schools. So we knew that we needed to take that charge seriously. And so Dr. Townsley, I'm glad that he's with us, because I think following in the recognition that what we want is to have schools that are centering the needs of our young people, that recognizes that we can, that we're doing, that we need to do more, that we need to advocate more, and that we need to fight for more resources while we're working with the resources that we have, right? And re-engaging the trust and building, continuing-to-go relationship with our communities. We know that we have to, one of the first things that we have to do with a new superintendent is make sure that the community understands and is in relationship with the superintendent. The same thing with the Board, right? In order for, you know, we are in charge of taking care of our young kids, which is a really, really big charge, right? So part of it is, we have to create the relationship between our communities, our families, our young people, and ourselves, as well as the superintendent. So I'm really glad to see him out in the community. I see him in places, making sure he's connecting with educators, with students, with teachers. So that's really amazing, right? At the same time, we recognize that we're working with constraints, right? So for me, I come from the world of organizing and advocacy. And so that means that I'm a firm believer in building people power, right? And so to me, one of the ways that we continue to support the superintendent and our students is to really be advocates and organizers in showing up at things like the legislature. I worked this year with the rest of the Board members to make sure we were showing up to the legislature, where we were talking about the importance of increasing, changing the equal cost-sharing formula, which essentially is what gives us the amount of dollars that we spend per student. We wanted an increase in, we wanted a weight added to special education, because we don't have that, and we know that it is one of the biggest cost drivers, but also one of the things that we need the most of, right? Because it's not about just the cost of special education, it's that we need to meet that cost, because our students deserve to have access to those needs, right, and to those services. It also asks for a bigger weight on English language, on ELL, right? And so we have to be able to not just mitigate with the resources that we have today, but we also have to be able to advocate, organize, and be at the state legislature, where we are demanding more dollars, more funds, where we are asking for the things that are due to our communities, where we're engaging with parents or young people. One of the best things that I think worked out for us was being able to engage with families and young people, bringing them over to the Capitol to speak on the importance of Hartford Public Schools and the need for more resources, as we were getting creative about what to do with the resources that we did have. But we also recognize that we're in a place where we keep having to cut and cut and cut. And those cuts ultimately are going to impact our students' ability to learn. And so, yes, we have to balance the budget. You know, I don't know, you may have heard about the importance of balancing the budget, and that is very true. But it's equally important to be out there chasing and fundraising and asking for more dollars, right, and advocating at the state legislature for what our young people are owed. So yes, we have to balance the budget at the end of that year. You know, that is our duty to do so. But at the same time, we have a responsibility to make sure that you all have the things that are important and the things that allow you to succeed. And we don't do that if we're not showing up in those places where decisions are being made. And we don't do that well if we don't actually do that in relationship with parents and students and families. So that's a big answer, but I hope that was able and happy to clarify any of it. But I think you have to do both. You have to be able to work with what you have now, while also building towards the future that asks for more, because we deserve more, and we're owed more, so that our young people can have what it is that they need to thrive, not just survive.
So that's a great segue to the second question. There has been longstanding conversations about consolidating or putting together shared departments such as human, with a city government, such as the human resources, finances, buildings and grounds. And the question is, as a board member, will you support moving forward or towards that type of consolidation? And why or why not?
I think we have to be really intentional. Why are we doing it? I think it's the most important part of it, right? I think something like Parks and Recs, having more of a, Parks and Recreation, having more of a built-in relationship with our ability to provide maybe after-school programs, maybe summer programs, right? That might be an important way that we are able to do that. Maybe there are some ways that we can blend some of these departments to have more efficiency, right, on the outskirts, to make sure that we're reducing costs, but also are able to continue to do what we need to do. So I think the why is going to be really important. So where it makes sense, I think I will support that. However, where it doesn't make sense, right? Where we know that blending these things or not asking for those resources is going to result in less than adequate of a return on our investment, right? Then I wouldn't support something like that, right? Because I think the why is going to be extremely important to say, yes, it makes sense for Parks and Rec to be a little bit more involved here. It makes sense if we're able to partner with this department better, right? Absolutely. I think that's fantastic, and it needs to be done. But we're in areas where it doesn't make sense, right? We're in areas where we actually have to protect the funding for that department, because we know that the impacts are extremely important, then I will do that. I will support for us to stay there. So I think overall, it's going to be on a case-by-case basis, but it really has to come out to the why. Why are we doing it? How is it going to impact? What is the ultimate, what will be the consequences? Both the intended consequences and the unintended consequences that we didn't see coming, right? So we have to be, I'm a firm believer that we have to be strategic. Hartford Public Schools is not a simple system. It is a complicated system, is a big education system in one of our biggest cities, right? The capital city. And so due diligence has to be followed for us to make sure that we are doing things well and that we are not making rash decisions that are going to have long impacts, because anything that we do has such a direct impact, not just on our students, but also on our staff, many of which are parents, many of which live in the community, right? So whatever it is that we choose to do, I think we have to know the why. How is it going to impact us? And what were those intended or unintended consequences? And it has to be done strategically.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I know that that has been a hot topic, but I want to give the opportunity now to Kaliana Serrano for her to share her questions with you. Kaliana?
Hi, good afternoon.
Hello, hello. Thanks for having me.
Okay, so the question I have is, as a member of the Board, what steps would you take to ensure that all Hartford schools receive equitable funding and the resources they need to support students and teachers?
That means my job, everybody has their own, and city government will have their role, right? The mayor is in charge of the city. My job in Board of Education is to fight for our students. And to me, that means that we are working across, we're working with community coalitions, right? That are fighting for that funding, where we're adding our voice to those community coalitions, where we're showing up at the legislature. We leave a lot of power on the table when we are not showing up as a city collectively in a united front at the legislature, right? There's this narrative about Hartford that we get a lot of money, which, sure, but if you really think about, you break down our need versus also what we are owed, it is actually not, we're not getting actually what we're owed, right? And so part of what we need to do is not leave power on the table. That means we're working across coalition with community members, community organizations, students, parent groups. It means we're meeting and developing strategies with our city government and local government. It means we're establishing and creating and expanding relationships with our legislature right down the street in Hartford, right? What a beautiful way would it look like to have a coalition, right? That is encompassing of students, of families, of parents, of educators, of administrators, of Board members, who are showing up and advocating and saying the same thing, which is, we are owed and deserve more. Our young people, our schools deserve the resources that they need. And we live in a state that your access to resources depends on the zip code that you live in. And I happen to think that it is extremely unfair for Farmington or some of these more, some of these districts who have more dollars, right? Because of the way that we fund education, we have very different experiences. And I had an opportunity to work in organizations that do racial equity and education work, and I got to visit a lot of our schools, not just Hartford, Manchester, East Hartford, some private schools, some schools in really wealthy neighborhoods. And there's a big difference. And in order for us to impact that change, means we have to show up. We cannot leave power on the table. We have to be working in our own coalition. We have to be centering our young people, and we have to continue to develop relationships with our young people, because there's no reason you guys are not there with us every year at the legislature. There's no reason we're not all marching together to let our voices be heard. And so the more strategic we could be about how do we work together? And that's really what brought me here. I was part of a coalition working to fight against the cuts that, you know, the $30 million cuts that we were experiencing. And I recognize if things were already hard when I was a student, I know how much harder it has gotten. Things have gotten more expensive, and we're expected to do the same level of work with things that are, with things that are more expensive, but with less money. That is defunding our education. And in order to fight that, we have to be working together, and we have to be showing up at the legislature, because we have to demand a better equitable distribution of resources for such a wealthy state.
Thank you. I will, I will just have a quick time check. We have 15 minutes more to go, and we have a couple more questions. And the next one, it will be done by Ningosi.
Hi, my name is Ningosi, and my question is, how do you respond to input from students, teachers, and parents within your district that have grievances?
We have to be doing that. You know, I think part of it is making sure that we're in relationship with folks, right? That means not just waiting for people to come to the Board of Education meeting. Yes, it's a good place for people to share what's happening, but it's also answering emails. It's also making sure that we are going to the local community events, that we're listening to our families. And to me, it's extremely important that we create, and I think we've done that as a Board, and I want to continue to be able to do that, which is direct input from our families, direct input from our unions, direct input for our students about what's happening, right? One of the things that we knew was going to happen this year because of the fear was we needed, we knew we needed to make sure we had a policy in our ICE and immigration, so that we were not reactive, but being proactive about what needed to happen, right? That came from talking to parents, that came from, yes, me knowing that that was an important thing that needed to happen, but also because I got to speak with so many parents who were scared to send their kids to school, and we needed to be able to respond to that. So the more we can do that as effectively and as fast as possible, that is how you start to build a relationship between all of us so that we can all march in the same direction, which is really for the benefit of our young people.
Thank you.
Chris, so the question about, you know, having resources and making sure that we are doing the best and getting the best services. One of the concerns has been staff burnouts. And really, teachers burnout, limited professional growth opportunities, staff turnover really continue to challenge the district. As a board member, what specific actions will you take? What specific new actions will you take to support teachers and staff? And will you approach building strategies that have worked in the past or just looking to innovation and new opportunities as a whole?
I think both hands, what can we innovate and what has been working, right? I think, but you don't have to recreate the wheel if you don't have to, but you do have to insert new things that might be more beneficial. That looks like having, you know, an increase in salary to make sure that we, that our teachers, which we did this year, that are on board with the same surrounding area similar to Hartford. But it also means beyond the salary increases, and that just doesn't just go for teachers, it also should go for support staff. It should go with, it should go to custodial staff, right? Because we all work as a unit, right? To, you know, one of the questions that they ask us is, what is the role of the Board of Ed? Is it to change a lightbulb? No, our job is to make sure that someone is there to change the lightbulb. Like, I don't have to change the lightbulb, but someone has to be there to do so. And the burnout is happening because there isn't someone to change the lightbulb. There isn't someone to provide that extra level of support and resources that the teachers need. So the teachers are forced to do so much with very, very little. That creates, that creates a pattern where then they get exhausted. They want to be there for their kids, but they can no longer take it, because they're humans, and they are not having the support systems that they need. That means we need more paraprofessionals. That means we need more behavioral tech support staff. That means we need more special education staff, which we know is an issue across the nation. But we can work. We have some of the best universities in the country. We can work with UConn. We can go with our CCSU systems to see what are some ways we can encourage or promote special education, you know, at a higher education level. There are so many creative ways, and I come from higher education as well. There's so many ways that we can work with our higher education systems to make sure that finding the talent isn't a problem. But also, while we have the talent, we have to make sure that they have support systems. There is no reason, if you need a paraprofessional in your classroom, that you don't have one. There's no reason that if you need a paraprofessional in a behavior tech, you shouldn't have those things. But that comes with resources, and that is going to help, more than anything, make sure that our teachers have the support systems that they need. It also means having an administration that listens to them, that answers to their grievances, that takes their concerns seriously, and that applies not just lip service, but actual money, finances, resources behind supporting them. Because the more they are supported, the more they can support our young people. It also means holding accountable folks who may not be doing the things that they should be doing, right? For the benefit of our young people. But ultimately, what it means is that we have to be able to provide our educators with the resources that they need to be able to do the job well, so that they don't get burnout. And that, to me, looks like more roles. There's no, for example, sometimes our classrooms could be overcrowded, right? That is easily solvable if we hire more staff. If we change the way that we set up our individual classrooms, right? All of those could have answers. Some of them means more money. Some of them means more strategy around it. Either way, we have to be continuously thinking about what those all are and making sure that there's a lot of things we can't control, but what we can control, we should be doing. And so to me, that means, and we've begun, I think, to take some of those steps to make sure that at the very least, when it comes to compensation, we are meeting some of that moment.
This is such a critical, you know, area or function of the board member, right? To ensuring that there is retention and there is ongoing investment on the staff. I want to just pass on for the last round of questions from our youth here, and we will start with Ningosi.
Okay, so my second question was, how effective do you believe that the education system currently is in terms of setting children up for success in life, especially Hartford students?
I mean, I think overall, we have a problem in this country where we do not value education. There's, we live in one of the richest nations in the history of the world, and by extension, we live in one of the richest states and one of the richest countries in the history of the world, right? And we always have excuses as to why we cannot provide for our students. So we end up in situations where our schools are underfunded, where our kids are not taken care of. And so to me, that means that there is a lack of political will and power to, political will, not power, political will, to actually show up for our young people. And to me, that means that we do not take education seriously. I come from a world of equity and education. My job has been to learn about the inequities and how they show up, right? And one of the ways that they show up is the financial segregation that we often experience as a state, where wealthy areas can hoard their wealth, and areas like Hartford get extracted a lot of their wealth, but nothing gets put back in, or very little gets put back in, right, from the state. So as a country, we're failing miserably. I'm making sure that education is a top priority. As a state, we're doing the same thing. And sometimes it bothers me when I hear data about Connecticut being one of the best education systems in the country, because it is for some students. What does that say to the students who are purposely being left behind? Not because of something they did, but because it is a systemic failure, is an institutional failure. It is the adults that have failed those systems, not those students. And so to me, it's extremely important that we, of course, correct and that we recognize that in every city, in every town, school budgets are the number-one item, and it should also be for the state, but it should be well-funded, right? And that comes with the desire to make sure we all do well and that we actually believe in education. And so we can do much better, both as a local city, as well as a state and a nation.
Thank you.
Of course.
Kaliana?
Okay, so my second question would be, what's your plan to make sure Hartford schools have a strong academic, extracurricular, and engaging programs? And now, and how will you show why these programs are important?
Absolutely. I mean, I think having after-school programs, whether it be sports, whether it be access to internships, access to programs that help with higher education, whatever your interest area, you should have an ability to have robust systems of after-school programs, summer programs, in-school support programs, right? Because we should be supporting our students as a whole. And we recognize even something, you know, for example, we often have to fight, what is the importance of something like our family education center, our family resource centers? Well, our students are dealing with a lot of stuff, right? Every so often, we will hear of a terrible fire that happened in Hartford or something that happened, and our students are going to need wraparound services. That is an extremely crisis situation. But on a regular basis, our students also need, our students should not have to go without art. Art is such an important, for example, part of education. You learn so much through art. You learn so much through the application of art. You learn so much about yourself, about the world around you through it, through music, through sports. So we should have access to all of those things. And so to me, that means that, it means as we're talking about the budget, it means making sure that when we're making these cuts or when we're adding money to the budget, that we're also prioritizing those things. These resources are not extras, right? They are equally as important as instruction is. It is equally as important to building relationships between our young people. It is equally as important to build a sense of pride. I am a Weaver Beaver until I am no longer on this earth. And that came through an emphasis on sports. That came through an emphasis on after-school activities. That created a sense of relationship where I'm still deeply friends with a lot of the people I went to high school with, right? That's a sense of community that those systems and those after-school programs and those resources create, and they're irreplaceable. So they are not in addition to instruction, they are part of instruction. And so I view it as such. And to me, that means putting resources to back those things up. So even if it means we won't be able to do it internally because of lack of resources, it might mean working with a local nonprofit to make sure those things are delivered. And ultimately, working towards a system where we have all of those things in-house that are provided well and well-funded. In the meantime, who else can we partner with? One of the things about organizing and advocacy is, who are your friends? Who can you call? Who can show up? Who can deliver this thing? And getting creative around those things so that our young people don't go without. As we're building a more systemic change that allows that to exist beyond what we currently have.
Thank you. So as we, I would love to continue to have candid conversations, right? And to really dive in, because there are many issues that are affecting the students. And there are many things that really cannot wait to be solved. Every year that passed by is a life that is in transition. And sometimes the government or the entity takes so long to make these changes that kids already graduate. So we would love to have further conversations with you in the future. But for now, is there anything else that you would like to add and share with our coalition and with whoever have access to this recorded meeting? Anything in particular?
Yeah, I mean, I think we're stronger together, right? We are able to do, the government is always going to take a lot longer than we would, right? We are able to show up in ways, whether it be book, you know, book drives, whether it be bookbag drives, whether it be providing, making sure our young people have access to their uniforms or to, you know, the things that they're going to need for the school year. Those are some of the things we can mitigate collectively, right? Whether it's through mutual aids or networks of support, and some things that we can have an impact on now. But most importantly, I think what I want to leave folks with is that we have to be in the business of building power together so that our shared agenda is pushed as we're building. Because what that does is that while we're building for institutional change, people are getting to know each other and troubleshooting answers to problems that might exist today, right? That might not be needed, that we might not be able to wait on. But we have the brilliance of the collective together to do so. And especially now, when we're seeing the defunding of the Department of Education at the federal level, when we're seeing the attacks on our LGBTQ students, our attack on undocumented students, attacks on special education students. It is more important than ever, because those attacks are not new. They might be heightened and exacerbated and make faster where we are right now, but they are not new, right? And so what we have to do is we have to be in relationship with one another. We have to build coalitions with one another so that we are pushing for those systemic changes. And in the meantime, when you get together with friends, when you get together with allies, when you get together with co-conspirators, you also come up with solutions for the now, right? Whether it's a food drive, whether it's a clothing drive, whether it's a letter-writing campaign, whatever a case may be, we are able to do that as we're building power together. And so for us, I say, as a city, we get to do more. And part of our job as elected officials is to inspire that, but also to be in relationship with you all. And part of our job as elected officials is to inspire that, but also to be in relationship with you all to do that, not just during election season, but that it is happening all year round, not just legislative season, all year round. And we're always building towards that collective vision that we want together. Because Krista by herself is just Krista yelling at the wind. But Krista and all of us in this room, Krista and all of your coalition, Krista and Board of Ed members and all the folks that are involved, you have a much higher chance of creating the change that you want to see both in the short term and in the long term. So I'm excited to continue that work. You know, I come from a place of organizing and advocacy and I'm a firm believer that we do not do this alone. We do this together. And so I want to continue to be able to build, and our students are going to be one of the most powerful ways that we do that. And we do that by also investing in their leadership and investing in their, in their engagement. And I'm so very excited to know that at least two of our young people were here to ask these questions because that's part of that process.
Absolutely. Well, once again, thank you so much, Board Member Krista. We appreciate your time. And on behalf of the Hartford Votes Hartford Vote Coalition, which we, is a nonpartisan, volunteer-driven network, we are very grateful for your time to answer our questions tonight.
Thank you so much. It was a pleasure.
Likewise.
Take care.